The meeting of the Johnson County Council, July fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. I'm going to pray over our meeting and then we'll stand for the Pledge of Allegiance if you would care to join me. Heavenly Father, please bless our leaders and our citizens and all who strive to make this community a better place. May our decisions and our discussions reflect justice, compassion, and the common good for everyone. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance in the blood of the United States of America. To the republic, to its saints, one nation, with liberty, justice, and all.
So, next on the agenda is approval of tonight's agenda. We have a couple of changes. Items E, two, three, and four have been removed. Okay. I'm sorry, Amy. Amy, could you take roll call for me, please?
Pamela Burton.
Present.
Jonathan Myers. Monique Gristimer.
Here.
John Mallers.
Here.
Shannon Graves.
Here.
John Dittmers.
Here.
Ron Bates.
Present.
I'm prepared for a motion to accept the agenda as the change is stated.
Move to approve as amended.
Second.
Third.
We have a first by Mr. Mallers and a second by somebody at the end of the table. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes. Any public comments? Limited to five minutes at the podium and reserved for agenda items only. So if there's someone that would like to speak, you can come to the podium and state your name and address and we'll recognize you and give you your five minutes. Seeing no one approaching the podium, we'll move on to item B, which is routine matters on our consent agenda. And it's by a single motion, the board approves the following items, which may include salary ordinances, amendments, additional appropriations, reductions, and transfers. Any items listed on the consent agenda can be removed by a council member and moved to the regular agenda. Does anyone have anything that they've seen on the consent agenda that they would like to remove? If not, I'm open for a motion for.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve by Mr. Myers and a second by Mr. Mallers. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes. Moving on to item C, salary ordinances, amendments, additional appropriations, reductions, and transfers. First up is our Board of Commissioners.
Barb Davis, County Administrator.
Brian Bear, Johnson County Commissioner.
No.
Before you this evening is a request for three hundred thousand dollars from the General Fund. This is for, to start the process of repair of the juvenile detention center, where an individual had went through the front entrance. So, the commissioners hired a company to come up with the design to make the facility more secure and then make some other adjustments. And if you have any questions about that, Mr. Bear can answer the design. The notice to bidders went out today. So we will see how much it's going to be. This is just an estimate. Of course, some things that's going to be changed, insurance might not reimburse. But the county does have a twenty-five thousand dollar deductible.
And if you need somewhat of an explanation on what might change, I can give you that if you're, if that's something you're curious about.
I assume it's to make it safer to prevent future cars from driving through.
That was, was the way we're going to do the barricades going.
Nice.
Ballards going in, but also we're removing the glass roof from it and putting on a metal standing seam roof, which is more secure.
Yeah.
And will be a lot less maintenance down the road. Some of those things they may not cover, but if we can prove that those are essential to make it right, then I think we can get some back from that. But we need to do that type of construction regardless, just to make sure that we make it last for the next twenty-five years instead of ten or twelve, which is what you get out of the roof panels before they start leaking glass panels.
Thank you.
So did the individual get into the security or the magnetrometer, whatever that thing is you walk through?
He did not, but only because he didn't realize the wall was angled there. He hit the wall before he got to that point. He went to the wrong side. If he'd gone to the other side, he would have made it all the way through.
Good decisions, right.
What's the timeline for the completion?
Until we get the bid process out and get the bids back and what all has to be done. And then I assume a tentative schedule at that point, we really don't know.
Hope to do it this year?
Oh, yes. Yes, it definitely has to be done. I mean, basically we're applied with right now on the one side, so we need to get it.
So basically all or the majority of this will be reimbursed through insurance with exception to the deductible, correct?
And any changes they won't accept is vital to the repair.
That's the piece that might be open, but once again, that'd be something that is, we should do anyway, according to what you just said, right?
They have hired an independent adjuster and a professional engineer and they're supposed to be at the site tomorrow, taking a look at it, so.
Got to approve.
So is there any further discussion? I'm just out of curiosity, did anybody get hurt?
I don't know how to answer that, no.
Okay.
We have a motion on the floor to approve as presented.
Second.
So we have a first by Mr. Dittmers, a second by Mr. Myers. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Innkeeper's Tax Collections. Evening, Mr. Kosky.
I'm Ken Kosky, Director of Tourism. Just wanted to provide you a brief update. I know you were inquiring previously about our grants. We have, to date, awarded a hundred thousand of our two hundred and ninety thousand in grants. We have three more grant applications coming to us in August. And we also have progress on some things that aren't reflected in that, the Edinburgh Public Plaza, the Father of Public Plaza, and then a downtown play area in Bargerville. So, looks like by the end of the year, we should commit that entire amount. So, this time I'll entertain any questions.
I did have a follow-up question to the last time you presented, Ken. I know we talked about some discrepancies in the expense item detail that you have on your books as compared to the list of what these titles are supposed to mean. And you were going to try to get with your bookkeeper and get those reconciled so they are the same. Have you made any progress on that?
I have contacted Angela Coy of Compass Point CPAs and relayed what the issue is, and she is currently working on it. She has not got back to me with her recommendation, so, but it is definitely on her radar. It's, when I talked to her on the phone, that the more detail you can provide and the more it's congruent to the budget, the better. So I see that as the ultimate path that we'll land on. Apparently she's been rather busy.
Thank you.
Any further discussion for Mr. Kosky? None. I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
We have a first by Mr. Mallers.
Second.
Second by Mr. Myers. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is Adult Probation Court Services.
Steve Kermode, Assistant Director, Community Corrections. This is a federal grant that we've received for past three years. And it is coming up at the end of the cycle, September, at the end of September. I know it's been written for again. We don't know kind of the status of that as of right now, but this is an attempt to have something in place to get us through the end of the year. If we do not receive that federal grant again. And this is a fee-based account that the remainder of that salary would come out of.
So this is nothing to the General Fund. This is coming from a fee-based account to cover until when and if the grant comes through?
Correct.
Okay.
And it is a current employee. It is not a new hire.
Correct.
Thank you.
And if the grant comes through, does it restore this account?
The grant comes through, we should know that before.
Before we start spending it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Any further discussion? None. I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a first by Mr. Dittmers, a second by Mr. Mallers. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
Okay.
Thinking. Next up, under Other Business, we have Greenwood Public Library coming with an update for us.
Good evening. My name is David Pennoff. I'm your council's appointed representative to the Greenwood Public Library Board of Trustees. We're here tonight just to give you an update on how things are going with the library and also some of the challenges that will face all of us with some of the legislation that's recently been passed. As the newest trustee, you just appointed me in February, so I'm probably the person least able to talk about the library in great detail and depth, but I did bring a couple of experts with me. I have Cheryl Dobbs, our longtime and soon-to-be former Executive Director. And we're very, very pleased to have her tonight, and also Emily Ellis, our, I guess technically currently.
Lead Director.
The incoming Executive Director, and Emily's been our Assistant Director for seven, eight years. So they'll be able to provide you much, much better information than I can, and we appreciate the opportunity to present this to you this evening. Thank you.
Cheryl Dobbs, Greenwood Public Library, just wanted to take a minute to give you an update. You have a packet in front of you with some information about what our last year looked like. We're a little late coming with that because we were missing an appointee until February. And we're here before you to talk about how busy we are. With our completion of our remodel project, our door count was really super busy. And we had more new cards issued last year, and again, that increases is continuing this year. So sixty-four percent increase of new cards in two thousand and twenty-three, from two thousand and twenty-three, and a seven point seven percent increase in library visits. All of our numbers are up. We are seeing just things like more people are joining book clubs. It's just, it's a season of everyone coming to the library. Not completely sure why that's happening, except that, of course, we offer wonderful services. But it's coming at the same time, as you know, changes in legislation will affect our funding. I know you all know Mike Reuters. He is also our financial advisor and appreciate his wisdom all the time. We have prepared for this day. Since two thousand and twelve, when I took over, our goal has been to be prepared not to have to take knee-jerk reactions when fluctuations happen in our revenue. But this is the first time since I've been Director that the budget and the revenue, instead of just fluctuating, and sometimes your revenue is a little higher than your budget and sometimes it's a little lower than your budget. Now, we lost an appeal. We got an appeal. We lost one, got one. And now we've got this gap. And the projection with property tax support, and then again with lit, which we will be talking with you about up from now through two thousand and twenty-seven and then on, means that our funding is just going to take a steady decline. No more are we going to see just a fluctuating revenue line that just moves with the assessments in our community, the values, the economy. Instead, this is, this is a complete change to how libraries are funded. So we are, we're going to be talking to you a lot, and we just hope that you guys will continue to ask questions of us, of Mike, and I know you guys are impacted too. So, I mean, every municipality is dealing with this together. But we hope that we can be partners with you guys and with the Johnson County Libraries and Edinburgh Library to figure out how this will work in Johnson County for our wonderful libraries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Congratulations to both of you.
Next up on the agenda, under Old and New Business, we have an approval of a contract for outside legal counsel. That gentleman's name is Peter King. So I am assuming, Tiffany, you want to give a brief synopsis of we've gone through it, the commissioners, I'm assuming have signed off on it.
Yep.
And everything is good to go and everything's in order?
Yep, and this is the contract that.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you, babe.
This is the contract that we worked with Mr. King on. It's gone through legal, so it's just ready for execution.
Okay. So I was working hand-in-hand with Tiffany and Mr. King, so mister's have signed off on it. I don't believe there's anything in that contract, but that is out of the ordinary, so. So if anyone have any further discussion or any questions, if not, I'm ready for motion.
I move to approve.
I have a motion on the floor.
Second.
Bates, a second by Mr. Mallers. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Passes. Items two, three, and four have been removed from the agenda, and that takes us to the last item under Old and New Business. And this is review and discussion. Tonight's session is a discussion of our WIS salary study. So.
Good evening. I'm Addie Rucker, Principal Consultant with Ignorant One in Chile. And I'm here with Lori Seeling, Senior Consultant, Ignorant One in Chile. And so what we'd like to do tonight is kind of just briefly walk you through the report, his some highlights. We know there's some new members that weren't here in two thousand and twenty when we did the original project. And then go through the compensation analysis spreadsheets and explain what those are, what you have in front of you, and then answer any questions that you may have.
So I've been tasked with the process of just briefly going through the actual report with you. I'm not going to read every page. I know you've received this earlier, so just hit on some of the key points of the report. First of all, so our project, our objectives of our project, starting on page two, number one is to review the current FES classification system that you already have in place, looking at your structures by job category. Second, we conducted an internal salary analysis where we pair classification factor points to your current pay schedules. Third, we then conducted an external salary market survey. And then we also reviewed the FLSA status of each job position in Johnson County. So Johnson County already has utilized the FES system, the Factory Evaluation System. So just as a reminder, the Factory Evaluation System breaks jobs into job category, clumping like positions together, and those are defined starting on page three. So we have comment positions, which are computer office machine operation and technicians. In Johnson County, those positions include receptionist, clerk, those are typically your clerical support, some technical positions. Next, we have the labor trades and crafts. Those are typically mainly in your fleet, your highway, your parks department, the hands-on labor type positions. Those are all clumped together in one classification. Johnson County has things such as custodian, maintenance, cook, kennel attendant, and the animal shelter. We have truck drivers, equipment operators. Those are, those are the types that are our labor trades and crafts positions. The next category is the PAT, which is the Professional Administrative and Technological. These are the positions that typically have to have a bachelor's degree or specialized training. They're more of the professional positions. We have, in the past, had department heads in that classification. For this project, we have pulled department heads out and have created another category for them called the Executives, and we'll get into those. But currently, your PAT job titles include GIS technician, environmental health specialist, juvenile case manager, teacher, public health nurse. Take a little bit more education, a little bit more of a degree. We tend to attract applicants for those positions more national than we do just local because it does take a little bit more education. We expect those people to be ready to just step right into the position and, and know what they're, not as much on the job training. Our next ones are merit polls. Those are our Protective Occupations, law enforcement. For Johnson County, those mainly, well, completely in the sheriff's department. So our deputies, our investigator, our sergeant, lieutenants, majors, those kinds. People that have gone through the Indiana Law Enforcement Academy, excuse me. Next is the civilian poll. So it's still Protective Occupations, law enforcement. They're just not those merit positions, so those are separated. Civilian poll physicians would include a deputy warden, corrections officer, case manager, field officer, correctional officer, dispatcher, shift supervisors, those types. So they're, they're still in those Protective Occupations positions. They just don't have the Indiana law enforcement merit behind them. On top of page five, you'll see the definition of the Executives. This is new for Johnson County. We pulled seventeen positions that were typically, or were currently in the PAT classification in civilian poll and moved them into the Executives. Executives are concerned with defining program objectives, staffing the department, coordinating the efforts of the organization, directing and evaluating their subordinates. So those are typically your department heads. So for Johnson County, we pulled and created the exec category. Those positions are going to include the animal shelter director, the park superintendent, emergency management director, health director. You see the consistency here with the director-type, department head-type positions, highway supervisor. And the last classification is your SO, your special occupations. These are positions that are pulled aside because they can't be classified in with, with the others. There's something special about them. For example, our probation officers, we set those salaries according to the Indiana Judicial Conference, so they're SOs. They're pulled aside. Chief deputies are SOs because we politically appoint those positions. And then we also have the SO attorneys because of the education requirements responsibility for those. So Johnson County have received four separate SOs, spreadsheets. SOs, SO chief deputy, SO probation, SO attorney. So we did the internal salary, which is the first section, and Addie will walk through those spreadsheets with you. In that, we compare the positions that we classified as about the same factor point. Those are the positions that should be paid approximately internally equitable. And so we set those salaries internally from what Johnson County, Johnson County government, not other municipalities in Johnson County, but, but just the Johnson County government, which are currently paying those positions and drew an equitable line for where those salaries should be set.
And just to be clear for everyone in the audience, that internal number is only Johnson County payroll numbers. It's not any other counties. It's not outside public companies. It's just those same categories within Johnson County payroll. How you compare to someone else within your same category.
Correct.
Thank you.
Page six, we defined your classification level, so you'll see in the comments you have four levels. The only thing I would, I'd like to point this out on this one is LTCs. We did create a new level, so you went from having four LTCs to five classification levels now so that we could separate those custodians and those maintenance positions. And then like I was saying on page seven, the executives have been completely created. That's, that's a whole new position, a classification category, excuse me. On page seven, we talk about the Fair Labor Standards Act. Another thing we were tasked with was to review the FLSA for the positions. We took six exempt positions. We currently had them classified as exempt and turned them into excluded because they're politically appointed positions. One non-exempt position, currently treated non-exempt. We reclassified that one as excluded because that one was also politically appointed. We took seven that were currently non-exempt positions and made them exempt. They met one of the classifications tests for exemption. And then we did have one exempt position that we switched back to non-exempt. It was currently being treated as exempt and did not meet one of the tests for classification. Bottom of page eight will show you exactly which positions are now excluded. So your elected officials are our first deputies, our chief deputies, the jail matron, the jail commander, the sheriff's chief deputy, and the coroner's chief deputy. Those are politically appointed positions are considered excluded. On page nine, it shows what positions are now considered exempt. And then top of page 10 has rest of those. Any positions not listed here on page eight, nine, and top of page 10 are considered non-exempt. And that's what the spreadsheet will show, and that's what the job descriptions. We recommend the job descriptions show that the FLSA status be non-exempt and those employees be treated as non-exempt. I do want to point out that the classifying, the factoring, the FLSA test, that was all based on job descriptions that were submitted by the county. We did not write any new job descriptions. We used the ones that were submitted to us. So if they were job descriptions that were the same from two thousand and twenty, those were not looked at as far as classification levels type thing. FLSA was reviewed, but classification levels were not. We kept the factoring where they were. On page 10, it talks about the external salary analysis we received from the county. Specific counties, towns, cities, and census designated places, CDPs, that you wanted us to utilize when, when pulling that external salary information. So you have the eighteen counties listed, seventeen towns, nine cities, and three CDPs that were utilized in pulling the external salary information. Page 11 goes into our methodology. So we start with an external salary line for each category, comet, PATs, LTCs, merit polls, civilian polls, and executives. Just so that you know, an external salary line is a regression, so we pull all those salaries. They're not direct job matched. We pull all those salaries from all those municipalities you requested, and we draw a regression line of the classification factor points that we see are similar to what they're paying. And that's where we get that regression line, and we use that midpoint. So we chop the top ten percent highest salaries, the lowest ten percent lowest salaries. We work with that middle eighty percent, so we, we have a solid external midpoint salary to work with. And then we direct job match for elected officials in special occupation positions, and Addie will get into that when she goes through the spreadsheet with you, but that's the methodology we use to come up with those spreadsheets, those numbers. Some of the findings and recommendations, the internal pay equity, lots of spots here that we found like positions not being paid the same base salary. You're going to get into that with the spreadsheets? Yeah, Addie will touch on that more with the spreadsheets. But just for examples, under the comments, Comet one classification level, animal shelter receptionist position is paid fifteen thousand, almost fifteen thousand, two hundred dollars less below the internal base for, for just the Comet one positions. That, that's, that's an equity concern. The animal shelters rescue coordinator and office manager are compensated seven thousand less than Comet two positions. So positions we factor similarly. We feel that, you know, based on the factory evaluation system, the job is similar, but those positions are making seven thousand less. Comet three, classification, legal assistant, and paralegals, just the same position, legal assistant slash paralegal. The salaries range from fifty thousand to fifty-eight thousand. Again, there, there's an internal equity issue there on understanding why the, the pay difference is occurring. In your PAT job category, PAT two classification level, sixteen thousand, seven hundred and twenty-eight dollar difference in pay between the victim assistant positions. Again, same position, but that huge spread of salaries without explanation. Again, same position, but that huge spread of salaries without explanation. Also in the PAT two, there's a thirteen thousand, four hundred dollar difference in pay among the environmental health specialist salaries. They range from fifty-five, eight sixty-seven to sixty-nine, two sixty-five. So our goal is to, to bring that to light so that we can focus on getting that equity. In the civilian poll job categories, poll two, the court security corrections officers are working one thousand nine hundred and fifty annual work hours and they're compensated the same as the correctional officers working two thousand and two hours. Civilian poll three, your jail assistant corporals work two thousand and two, paid fifty-eight thousand, two seventy-five. Dispatchers working two thousand and eighty are paid fifty-eight thousand, three eighty-six. So, you know, seventy-eight more hours a year for a hundred and some dollars. In your civilian poll five classification, the jail correction sergeants working two thousand and two are paid sixty-three thousand, five twenty-five. And your public safety communication shift supervisors, they work two thousand and eighty annual hours and they're paid sixty-three thousand, eight hundred and five. So to correct the pay equity issues caused by annual hours worked, it's our recommendation that these positions within the same classification levels be paid the same hourly rate. And then the annual salary would be based on the hourly rate per hours worked. And then finally, part-time dispatchers classified at poll three are currently paid five dollars and seven cents per hour less than their full-time dispatchers. Recommend that part-time dispatchers performing the same job functions with equivalent training and experience as full-time dispatchers be paid the same hourly rate. Equal pay, equal money. Equal pay, equal work, excuse me. The second finding that we have is for the probation officer compensation. In our review, the probation officer compensation, we found twenty-nine out of the thirty-three probation officers are compensated above the twenty-twenty-six minimum salary. Now again, we know that that may include some additional certification, education. You may have some other trainings, other monetary compensation that you add on to those salaries. What we, we were doing was just looking at what the minimum, the judicial conference says that the minimum salary has to be. And you have twenty-nine of the thirty-three already compensated above that minimum salary. In addition, twenty-one probation officers positions are compensated at ten thousand dollars above the minimum salary schedule. And again, it's noted in the report that the minimum salaries do not include additional compensation for education pay, extensive training, special skills, that kind of thing. We also want to make sure it's noted that according to the Indiana Judicial Conference, once a probation officer's salary is set, it cannot be reduced. So we can't bring that down for twenty-twenty-six. We can't bring it down until the position is vacated and hiring in a new position, a new person. So our recommendation would be that the probation officer salaries be reviewed with the council liaison and the probation department to analyze the salaries, discuss that additional compensation, and then bring that back to council for further discussion. I've already hit on number three, which is the executive job category. We found that the department head positions were classified in various job categories. Not very competitive with the external market. So we, we pulled them out, made that exact job category and, and set those salaries. The exec salaries are set higher than the PAT salaries because of the responsibility of the department. I, I've already talked about the fact that we restructured the LTCs. So now we have gone to five classification levels for those. And then the last finding that we wanted to talk about was the SO attorney compensation spreadsheet. You'll note that the attorney positions were direct job matched to the external market. But we recommend that attorneys be hired in at the external market midpoint salary due to the statewide shortage in attorneys and the competitiveness of the market. We recommend the salary ranges be established using the external midpoint salary and then add up from there. So the maximum salary is set at thirty percent above the external midpoint. This would allow for attorneys so that we can set competitive salaries at various experience levels. So you have a range of those salaries for them. Establishing and adopting a salary range for attorneys not only provides an incentive for job retention, but also provides the county with the ability to place new hires with experience above that established hire and salary. So the elements of pay philosophy, the following common elements on which pay structure is constructed. So we talked about the internal pay equity, getting everyone in Johnson County government internally paid. The external pay equity brings in the, the external market. There's performance pay as an option. Longevity pay is an option. Technical pay is an option. I would like to point out that during the department head elected officials interviews that we did during this process, several department heads and elected officials did request that consideration to longevity be made. I know that Addie worked last year to make some longevity options for the council. It was discussed. That is something that elected officials, department heads are still interested in. Some other things that the department heads and elected officials brought up during the interviews. They would like to see the council utilize a system for setting base pay that would be equitable, consistent, and make the budget process smoother. They would like to see pay increases be set based on a schedule or a program of process rather than just some departments get the, the pay increases, other departments do not.
This information that you're reading now, I don't see it on the.
No, this is information that we received during the department head interviews when we, when we called and spoke with each department head.
Did we get that via email? So we have that information? That would be great.
And also, is, are these considered benefits? For instance, longevity pay.
So a longevity pay is an add-on pay. So we are looking at the base pay, the worth of the job. And then an added on pay would be the longevity pay, the performance pay. That's where we, we have set the salary for the position. And then the longevity pay, the performance pay is actually the additional compensation for the individual.
It's a reward. It's a reward pay for longevity.
Pay, yeah.
Pardon me?
It's not a benefit as far as like, I think, are you referring to like commissioners versus council? Yeah. No, it's a council thing. It's in statute that it is considered compensation.
Yeah, if you have longevity, you would have to include longevity in your pay rates for calculating overtime. It would be all remuneration. So it would be considered compensation.
I have a question since we're talking about longevity pay. A lot of our employees that have been here for many years have longevity pay built in. We have not paid it separately. If the council moves to get base salaries set and then maybe include longevity pay, how do we clean up these base salaries internally when some some longevity pay is already included in that? How would you recommend cleaning it up?
Employee has been over the years given and given and given because they've been here for so long, they have technically received.
Right. It's kind of inherited built in.
Right. So how do you fix that?
So we would not recommend that the pay be cut, first of all. But if someone were, let's say, a high outlier, or they were already paid above the base salary that you, that's established by the council for that position or classification. You have, you would have a couple of choices and you, you know, you would develop a, a pay philosophy, pay policy. But you could one, freeze their base and then give them the add-on longevity as like a lump sum payment. You could freeze their base and do like a cost of living stipend if you're trying to maintain, bring those back in context.
The quandary is with the internal midpoint number provided by WIS, it uses those salaries that have longevity built in. So that is, those salaries are, are being reflected in that midpoint average for those similar job classifications. How do we fix that?
Well, the, the external data that's provided does not include longevity. Those are.
I'm going to talk about internal only.
Yeah, the, so the internal, I mean, unless you could decipher and pull out, if you know exactly how much longevity those are worth, I don't know how you would separate that.
Maybe pull out the outliers. If we can identify the outliers, pull those out and then find a new median.
Because if you've got five people that have been here thirty years, you know, doing that automatically is going to raise that base salary to, you know, even if you look at the external, you know, it's automatically going to raise that ba- base salary because they've been here for a long time. And I'm saying it's bad, I'm just saying moving forward. You know, nobody wants to claw any money back. But moving forward, you're going to have to freeze those base salaries and then yet do something for them still in addition, but to try to bring that gap together. And in order for us to use this as a tool, which is what we paid for, those are the questions that we as council are going to have. We're going to have to figure out a way for seven hundred plus people to do that.
Right. And this is common, you know, when you have a, a, a system you're creating, you're going to have some of that longevity. Just, and it's no fault of the employees who have been here because that's, they've received these raises well-earned over the years. But what this does show you, it shows you how those salaries compare internally. There may be, we did find some instances where you have some people that were hired and at the, around the same time that are making different salaries. And so the, so not in all cases does the longevity raise those salaries. So I.
But in some they have, we've.
In some they have, yes.
Looked at several, we've looked about eight hours at them today and several they have.
Right. But others have not, or some departments may have received raises where others didn't over the years. So I think you kind of have to try to, to use what you have and what we've established as internal pay lines based on your current salaries, regardless of how they got there.
Right.
And establish some sort of base going forward. And like I said, you can freeze those that are high. You can give additional, you know, cost of living stipends.
Yeah, we've, we talked about several of those things today, but I just wanted to make sure there was not something out there that we hadn't thought of. Okay.
Okay. Were there any other questions about the report? And if not, we'll kind of move forward with the compensation analysis.
I had a quick comment, question to you. In other counties, I was looking here at all the elected officials and all of our elected officials in the county are not even anywhere. Well, there's a few that are. But the elected officials are not even near the midpoint. How are the other counties? I mean, how do you recommend us handling that? What have you seen in other counties? I mean, because we got like the commissioners making forty-three thousand, six fifty-nine. The external average salary for them is actually fifty-seven. And we've got others similar.
Like those, those discrepancies though, Melinda, are about, they're pretty unique throughout the whole, not unique, but they're pretty, they're that way throughout the whole county with all of the employees.
And I agree. That's why I'm asking you, what do you recommend? Or what have you seen in other counties that has worked?
Generally, they try to, you know, use the data to, to set and as well as keep in consideration where some of the other department heads may fall, even though they're a little bit differently in the execs. But just trying to keep them competitive. So you have, these are direct job matches comparisons. So you can see exactly how everyone's being paid. And so it really comes to a pay philosophy question of the council of how, I mean, you want to offer competitive salaries to attract, you know, new people to take those positions. You know, when, when they're vacated and run for those elected offices. So I mean, there's, we can also look at, sometimes we run a, like a weighted average. So it might take off, like if there was a really high one, we could run that. So you could have a little, another look at it to see if that affects anything. It probably won't change a lot.
I liked what you said there about, and I think we as a council need to work on and figure out what our philosophy is first before we start deciding the numbers and, and throwing out recommendations. I think we need to, as a council, decide what, what is our, going to be our philosophy this year.
Yeah. And that goes for all categories. Like, do you want to be competitive right at midpoint? Do you want to be a pay leader and paying above? You know, or, and what do you need to pay employees to attract, you know, quality employees that are going to stay and do a good job in all positions and including elected official level positions? Good question. Well, I wanted to make sure we, before I forget, thank all the department heads that did cooperate. They were all very cooperative and they, we, they, we had phone calls with all of them. Sometimes, some of them multiple phone calls. Also want to thank the auditor's office. It was great on getting us information very quickly, helping us fill in some of the holes with salaries, names, hire dates, all that, you know, sometimes at the last minute. And then especially the, we had assistance from Tiffany, Taylor, and Barb in the commissioner's office throughout the process as well. That was helpful. Overall, we found that Johnson County is pretty competitive with the market. In, in the other counties we've worked with, we were very pleased to see that the increases were not in the double digits. So for, for, for us, that means you, the council has been making strides to be competitive. And some categories are more competitive than others with the market. But overall, I mean, coming in less than, you know, I think it comes in less than six overall percent. If you made changes to the, or adjustments to the external midpoint for all categories, I think that's, I mean, you should pat yourself on the back for that, that it says a lot about your strides over the years of keeping those competitive. I did want to make a note, there was a question earlier from Tiffany regarding the, the pay plans. So the external data does represent the twenty-twenty-five data collected. Anything, it does not include projections of what counties are doing for twenty-twenty-six.
Even if the reports say twenty-twenty-six, it really means twenty-twenty-five.
Yeah, this is your report as of today. But the, the data is twenty, I think the report says twenty-twenty-five salary analysis. So all the data is twenty-twenty-five data.
That's pretty much the way category works though. Everything works a year behind.
Yeah, because we don't know.
Actually, a year behind.
Other counties will do until they have their budgets.
That's the standard operating procedure that you work for one year in arrears. That's, that's not anything new, I don't.
So your best projection for twenty-twenty-six would be the, the external midpoints. And then the, according to the Social Security Administration, they're projecting a cost of living adjustment of two point five. So that, that gives you an idea if you wanted to be at midpoint and cost of living adjustment that would give you the best projection for twenty-twenty-six numbers.
But the goal from what I've seen by studying this in the last two or three days is, you know, one of the main goals is to get those base salaries as if you were and eliminating the person and eliminating the longevity, doing nothing but this is the position, equal pay for equal work.
Right. It's a job, not the person.
That's right. It's a job, not the person. So regardless if you walked in off the street today or you've been here fifteen years, you're still doing the same job. So the base pay on internal is the point, the ceiling that person can bring them in, right? So.
So we would say that the internal, everyone in that classification, like so if I'm looking at the LTC spreadsheet, LTC one, we have an internal base salary of thirty-nine thousand, seven fifty-six or an hourly rate of twenty dollars, point three eight eight. So we would say everyone should be at least at that internal.
Coming in off the street.
Yes.
So in anything, if we've got those positions today, anything above that we can assume is based, you know, longevity or for whatever reason, special pay, supplement, whatever. But the base pay would be regardless if you started today or if you've been here thirty years, it should be that.
So that, yes, that's running a regression analysis comparing your current salaries. So that, yes, that's running a regression analysis comparing your current salaries. Johnson County's government salaries to the factoring points of the position.
Okay.
So as the factoring points get higher, you know, the the salary is supposed to increase as a regression line.
Right.
Together correlated. And so that's what we're trying to establish, um. It for some of these, like the LTC, the the internal analysis, um, they're they're not, they're not too bad. They uh they're, it's a one point seven two percent increase over the LTC salaries to make them all. In line internally.
We ran some numbers today, doing the best part, doing if we did the. If we were in fairyland and had all the money we wanted and going to the minimum. And I think Johnson County is gonna be in a pretty good position this year, just as long as, you know, we carry our, you know, we're reserved. Uh, and following this tool, I think if we follow this tool this year, I believe next year will even be easier.
Yes.
And I think once we bring those positions back to where it's simply a math. Medical thing to do, I think the county will be in a good spot.
Yeah, and establishing either an internal base salary or just a base salary for each classification level within the categories. Um, will will correct those internal pay equities and then it will. Then the council can decide on their pay philosophy of, okay, how do we wanna, how do we wanna establish pay above that base? What do we wanna do? Do we wanna have a range and how are how are positions gonna move through that range? Or do we wanna set, you know, step levels? There's lots of different things you can do, um, but there should be. Defined criteria of how and why positions are moving. Is it longevity based? Is it.
Exactly.
Um, based on skill and experience. Um, that way it's defensible. Because right now, just looking at some of these, I don't know if they're, if they can be defended and justified.
That's what we came up with today, that that some of these, um, some of these positions, I think in order to protect the county. Uh, you know, equal pay for equal work, I think we're in a position at this point, knowing what we know. I think we are, you know, we almost have no choice but to work with at least the internal base salaries to start.
Yes, I think that would be priority to correct those and then look to see what what other pay adjustments you can make with the funds that are.
All of us are gonna be on an individual basis.
Right. Now, not all the categories, I will note, and as I can go through these in more detail, but not all of them have internal analysis.
These, the SO, what was it called?
The the.
Three or four of them that have no internal.
SOs, the execs and the merit pool. The merit pool were already internally aligned, so there was, it was not necessary to. To run, they were, you know, they're paid by the rank structure.
We did notice that.
Yeah, so we didn't show that, cause it was, I mean, it was their current salaries, basically.
I have a question about base pay, just, um, so we're not a a public company, we're government. And if we, like, let's just look at the the LTC ones. So if we were able to set all the internal base salaries for LTC ones at thirty nine, seven, five, six. And let's say, um, a a department head needs to hire a new employee. Should they automatically hire them at that rate? Or are we just saying this is the most the county can pay for that line item? So when you hire somebody new and they're not up to speed, maybe you start them at thirty five. Until they reach maximum potential and then they hit that base.
I think that's what she's saying.
So for for the internal, we're saying that is basically the minimal.
Minimum.
That they should be brought up to at least that to have internal equity. Now, now the external, you could um set up differently, but uh I would say for the internal.
I should be starting right.
Would be starting and then you can go above and beyond how you wanna set those other salaries.
Thank you.
Maddie, I have a question on uh performance productivity. Where is that? Uh, where does that matter? If you have somebody that is just coming in and basically basically doing the. Least amount to get through the day every day, and you have somebody that comes in and is, you know, not only doing their work, but maybe helping others and is exceptional. How do you gap that? It without any kind of performance review, um, uh, process?
Yeah, so in in order to pay for performance, you would have to have a performance system. Performance evaluations would have to be done and conducted and there be a fair process, like kind of a standardized process. For that, um, but it's. It's really hard in county government for that tool. Yes.
And it's almost impossible, I think, to mix it. You know, having one department do this and another department do it this way, it's almost virtually impossible.
But I think what what I'm hearing is it's a one size fits all deal for these positions within reason. Because you 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 don't have a lot of flexibility in terms of what skill set is or what um qualifications are or what performance is.
You you can create, um, in some counties here recently, we've created kind of a skill-based pay. Where you have defined criteria that you have a you have a higher end base salary. And then they can, it's a way to move through kind of an established range, but having that defined criteria. Um, that that they, and you could tie it to performance as far as they, you know, exceed at the required job. Um, functions, um, they're 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 training other people. Um, you know, you can set that criteria to have that, so like all the LTC ones would have the same base. But then there could be skill levels or steps that can include experience, performance, kind of a combination. However, the the council would have to define those very clearly and and kinda have the oversight of making sure those are.
Are met.
Are met.
But in this.
Positions are moved through.
But in this early process with what you've seen.
Yes.
And and I'm.
You need to start that, you need to start.
Have to have a strong.
Yes.
We we have got to get our base together before we even.
Get that started and then you can always expand on that, even mid-year. I mean, you don't have to get everything in place. To have a program that allows movement through the range, but I think if you get those focus on correcting those internal pay equities. Um, and then establishing your pay philosophy, how you want to to use the external data and and what the county can afford. Um, and then going forward, you can look at some other pay options and and. Um, cause the this can, this data can be used in multiple different ways and setting a.
But for this show, this budget season, I think we're just gonna have to eat this elephant one bite at a time. And start at the, start at what we absolutely positively have to do in order to be compliant and to protect the county.
Yes.
Is what I believe we will end up discussing, but, okay.
Do you want me to walk you through individually the spreadsheets or do you do have?
I have to tell you the truth, I think Michelle and I have them memorized.
I did have one question, no, and only just because I'm still confused, even that, though I think you may have said it twice. But again, it's, we have just looked at these numbers all day long. If you could help me just for the record, on the job category SO for probation. When it talks about the minimum salary schedule, I see the number twenty twenty six salary. For the third time, could you please help me understand, are those for twenty twenty, are those twenty twenty five numbers? Or is that the state has put out numbers for twenty twenty six?
Yes, so this one's different, I probably should walk through the SOs especially, um. So the the probation officers, um, the, we have the their current salary, that's the twenty five sk- um, salaries. And then the, so the twenty six salary placement on the judicial conference is the twenty twenty six schedule. Now, what's what's unique this year is that they didn't make any adjustments. The judicial conference did not make any changes to the schedule, so it's is basically the same as twenty twenty five schedule. Um, but what what we wanted to show here is just, um. Looking at the minimum salary schedule, how they compared, you had four positions that will be below the the. The adjusted minimums that are coming in for increases according to the schedule. Um, but then the the other positions are paid above the minimum salary schedule. And there could be lots of reasons, we're not saying that they're automatically overpaid and they shouldn't have any other raises. Um, we work with other counties and we we know of at least six of the counties we work with. That they do pay above the schedule for, based on either programming that's completed, certain training. Or or a salary schedule that they, their councils have approved that are above this.
But but the majority of the counties pay the minimum.
Majority of the counties pay the minimum, um, but not saying that's right or wrong, but um. That's how it is, but there would have to be a little more detail to find out exactly why. It could be the programs, it could be their education.
Well, I have another question, uh, we have a lot of supplement line items. A lot of of specialty pay, a lot, what other words?
Stipends.
Stipends, bonuses, uh, supplements, overtime, a lot of areas. That funnel into someone's pay. So to just say this person makes X amount of dollars. That may not reflect what's on their check when they're taking home. So when when the study was done, was any of that taken into consideration?
Included in these.
Was it included in any of these numbers?
We we try to focus on the base unless they were, you know, like I think on the chief deputies, we noted in the auditor's office that. There's a position that received additional money for working with the council.
But that's the only one that I saw that that looked like it had disclosed that there was additional monies received from a separate line item.
And we know there are more that receive supplements, so we just wanted to make sure that those num- supplements, special pays. Stipends, bonuses were not already built in your numbers.
I don't believe so.
Okay.
We can we can double check, but um.
So would that include grants?
No.
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 That's just where the pay is coming from.
Okay, but how do we identify that going forward?
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, we we had requested base salaries, we tried, you know, might have missed something, but um, we tried to leave that out.
But that might have a lot to do with the reasons why the base salary reflects one thing, but yet they're making appear because of the specialty pay.
Yes, yes. So we are trying to compare base salaries to base salaries, so we had a, you know, more of an apples to apples to the external market.
We just weren't real sure about that, so.
We didn't assume anything.
No, that's, no, that's great, great questions. I did wanna point out on the SO attorneys, this spreadsheet is a little different. Um, I know it was mentioned in the report, it was Laurie's going through. Um, so we didn't technically provide a low, like a a number per below the external midpoint. Because we are recommending that those um positions be hired in at at midpoint for the competitiveness. Um, and your, the current salaries are pretty well bo- above the what would be the low anyway. Um, and giving them a larger high end to have more flexibility because there is a staffing shortage with. Um, attorneys across the state, a lot of counties are stealing from each other. Um, so I think if you can have a competitive range and it gives the, you know, the county and the deputy prosecutor flexibility. In recruiting and retaining and being able to move some of those positions through or employees through the range based on skill level.
As we're going through some of this stuff with the individual department heads and directors and they're. I say that, I gotta have to say this politically correct, um. There's discrepancies, in other words, we're saying that we think it's done this way and the director's saying, no, no, the numbers came from here. This isn't accurate, we need to relook at this. This is still a situation where we can have tip or someone shoot you an email and you'd look at it.
Sure.
And and we can go back and adjust and fix, because I think we're gonna find some where. That maybe we're looking at it incorrectly and maybe haven't quite understood the direction. So when we work with the individual department heads and directors, we'd like to keep that open line and that ability to say, hey, I know you said this, but. And we can have you look at whatever it is.
Yeah, and we we've worked with the the department heads, trying to make sure that the positions were correct and the salaries were correct, trying to them. And we, you know, we did go through that verification process, but again, there there's a lot of information, there are a lot of jobs. Um, so if we if we did miss someone, we do apologize. Um, and if we got something wrong, you know, like I said, we we can help correct that and I will send over everything in Excel as well. So you you can use that and run some other options if needed for your budgets.
I did have a question on that SO attorneys.
Mm-hmm.
If you could look at that, it may be a calculation error on your spreadsheet, or maybe I'm just not understanding it. But we have the twenty twenty five annual salary. Then we have the external midpoint salary.
Mm-hmm.
But if you look at the external salary range, it's the beginning number for all those. It doesn't seem like the midpoint is truly a midpoint number.
So it is the midpoint based on our calculation, but the range was developed using the midpoint as higher end. And setting the the max at at thirty percent above, so that that's why I wanna point this one out, cause it's different than everyone else. So there's not, they're technically not an external low.
Okay, so the range starts at thirty percent higher.
The max goes.
Max is thirty percent.
So the other categories, um, we established the external, I know this is a lot of information. That we established the external ranges at, um, for like the comment, LTC, PAT. And the polls, ten percent below external midpoint is the external low.
Right.
Ten percent above is the external high or max, is how we establish the range. Now, the execs and the SOs went up fifteen percent. And so this is the only one that's different, where you don't have a, technically don't have a low. This, we would call it more of a higher end at midpoint and then going uh.
So the low end is the midpoint?
Yes.
It's not it. Yeah, absolutely, I've, so Michelle, not that we're down, not that we're hogging the microphones down here, sorry.
Oh, it's fine.
So we.
A lot of good questions.
Well, I would it out, Mr. Myers.
All right, thank you. I just had a couple of questions. You know, this is a really complex system. And it takes somebody that really knows what they're doing, uh. What you're telling us tonight too, a lot of that plays into this. How do we go forward? They've produced this information and we have all this information and. It's daunting for us at this point in time. Is whiz going to be there? And what do we need to do?
For.
Going forward, I mean.
Well, um, I agree with what you just said. So, um, I don't think any of us are, if you guys do, you need to tell me have have an exact plan, but I will tell you that, um. Michelle and I together have probably put thirty hours in these reports in the last two or three days. Uh, she was here all day today, I was here half a day, she's going to be here all week and I'm gonna be here tomorrow and on Friday. Going to try to work individually with everyone that we can and basically take every line item and ask every question that we can ask. Because I think it is is agreed that if we can get these base salaries online, this will again be the second. Of the hardest year we've had with budget, but I think if we can do this and get it accurate. Then moving forward, I think it will just get easier for the next council.
And I'm waiting on the fact book still. That's how I've used it in the past.
Yeah.
It's very helpful.
Yeah, it's helpful and it's also helpful that they've done eighteen of those comparable counties for us in their study. So we at least do have eight, the information on eighteen of them.
That would have been a year ago, though.
Right.
Yeah, it's a year behind.
Right.
We don't know what those counties is in the in the meantime.
So the counties, though, do run a year behind. Most of all of them will always run a year behind on their the numbers, that's what I have found, so.
But I, that's my point, it's a quandary, it always is. I mean. How do you, how do you become current?
Well, the best way would be to go to midpoint plus a cost of living. Would be, would get you at least uh over the hump for moving towards twenty twenty six.
So how do you, and and of course you do this with other counties, but I'm sure other counties have the same number of. Elected officials we do, twenty twenty four. And so all of this falls underneath the elected official, correct? It's absolutely absolutely their responsibility to have some input.
Like the, we have in the the Indiana code in the report that it's the council that sets the. Sets classifications, sets the pay, sets the number of positions, so.
Fire.
Yes, they do, but the council sets the number of positions, the council sets the classifications as far as. Assigning LTC one, uh, LTC two, whether you're a PAT, whether you're exempt or non-exempt.
I don't argue that, but the involvement of the elected official needs to happen.
Sure, but the ultimate decision-making comes to the 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 council in deciding.
They get.
Philosophy.
They get in based on the guidelines set for the council.
To to kind of, um. Solidify the 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 council's system, we would recommend that. You adopt the FES system, adopt the classifications, you don't have to adopt the pay, but. The positions that are listed by category, adopting those by an ordinance so that they're official. And those those classifications can't. And those, those classifications can't change unless there's a process in going through the council. Um, because if, if there's not a process, you end up with these internal pay equity issues that you have currently.
Well, then is that, is the FES system the best system? I mean, there are other systems, correct?
Sure.
There are simpler systems.
They, this.
I understand that we need to do this now, but going forward, should we consider another system?
That's complete, that's completely up to you. Um, we have seen this work in, um, you know. Dozens of counties and cities. Um, the nice thing about this is that is it was developed by the Department of Labor. For public sector positions. So it does segment jobs, so you're comparing like jobs to each other. You're not putting the merit poll officers as the, you know, the merit deputies in with the deputy recorders or deputy clerks. Because they're, they're two completely different jobs. They have different requirements. They have different, um. Skill sets and work environment. So that's, that's why this system, um. It's, it's why we utilize the system. It's not proprietary to us or any other entity, but. Um, and it can be customized and modified to, to fit your county's needs. Um, we definitely have, every system we've done looks a little bit different. Um, and so we really try to customize it to fit your county, the jobs you have. And the internal rank structure of these, um, departments and that we, you know, we discussed that with them. Um, will they all like what they see on these pay plans? No. But that was not what we were, we were charged with. We were charged with classifying positions. Showing you internal pay equity issues if they, if there were any and providing external salary data. Um, and so that's what, that's what you have before you to use as a tool. Um, going forward, but we're, we're happy to assist in any way, help with maintenance if, if, if that's how the council decides to go. Um, but we can definitely help you implement. Whatever form of this, if any, that you want to implement going forward, we're glad to help with that process and answer questions.
I think you've done exactly what we asked you. The company's done exactly what we've asked you to do and I, I appreciate it. Um. Anybody down here have any questions? Anybody else? No? Uh. I know we're paying you to be here, but. Um, I'd like to open the floor and see if anybody has any internal questions that while Addie's here. That are anything you've picked up on that we've said, anything you want to ask while she's here. Uh, we none claim to have all the answers. We'll, we'll do the best we can to get you what answers we can, but. If you have a concern or a question, uh, we basically got these reports Friday at five thirty. I'm sorry, four thirty and, uh, got our official explanation this evening. Um. We have, uh, everyone ha- ha- has been diligently trying to make. Some sense out of this and trying to come up with a philosophy or a plan that will work for everybody. And I know that the biggest frustration is just tell me what I need to do so I can do it. So, and I don't know that we have those answers for you tonight, but information that I do have is, um. Amy will send an email out tomorrow. We have a, I know that we have asked everyone to work on their twos, threes and their four hundred series. So you should be good to go on those. Got all of the guidelines you need on those. The only thing left is going to be the one hundred series, which is going to be your salaries. Um. And this board, we need to discuss it, but, uh. Well, it's a couple more things I'll talk to you about, but for now, let's, let's open it up for Addie. And if anybody has something they want to ask, now's your chance.
Those that have the, the miss counties that have a pay matrix specifically looking at. Uh, how was that figured? Is it just the base or take a search of your deputy on every?
Um.
Addie, will you come up and repeat the question so everyone will understand?
And there's a question on the, the merit of how the external, if there was a matrix, how those were used. Um, if, if there was a, um, we generally try to focus on the, on the base salary of those. Um, some of them we know were like the, if they had an external midpoint, we use that as well. But we really try to focus on the, um, the base salaries and then the differentials between the ranks.
Good. So if you had a. Did you hear me or do you want me to come up to her?
Why don't you come up here? Yeah. The way everybody online can hear as well.
Andy Martin, our chief deputy to sheriff's office. Okay, so my question specifically, for example, Bartholomew County. Uh, has a pay matrix with number of years of, uh, it's based on zero, five, five to ten, et cetera. Uh, and yes, that would be considered sort of a longevity thing, but that's pretty common in public safety, specifically with merit deputies. Merit officers that they will base that on years of, uh, years of service. So my question was about if the base salary was used on that. So for example, our comparison. We do not have a pay matrix, so a deputy that has been here for, uh, two days. Makes the same thing as a deputy that's been here for thirty-five years, if they don't have rank. And, uh, so my question is. If you're comparing that to Bartholomew County, you say, okay, well, uh, our ba- our base is seventy-five thousand. Okay, and Bartholomew County is, is eighty. Well, yes, that's eighty if you're brand new, if it's just comparing the bases. But if they've been there thirty-five years, they're making a hundred and five. That's what I think is an important part that I've tried to explain in years past when I did my salary and I would use a ten-year. I actually did the average of number of years of service because I don't know how common that is and I can't speak for any other county offices. I only know what. Sheriff's deputies and police officers, what's common in their salary ranges, okay? And so that's extremely common, that, uh, years of service factor, and it's actually literally written into their salary. Ordinance every single year. It's a chart that says as number of years of service, what rank you are and what your base pay is going to be. And so that's some of the things that aren't shown in it with, with, which I understand you have to, like I said in years past, when I would do my spreadsheet, my colorful thing. That, uh, it would be seventy-five pages long. If you try to do that with every single thing, you can't do it. Uh, so, but those are the important things too that aren't shown when you're looking at simple one number.
Well, I guess I don't understand what your question was because I want to hear her answer.
The question was, what, which they used? Did they use, did they pick a? Average like a ten-year deputy or did they pick the zero-year deputy and they picked the zero-year for comparison? So. Even within that, you're getting the bare minimum from those comparison counties. Not the true average.
Right.
No, so there's no longevity built into the number that provided for this merit.
Right, and it's not considered a longevity. So what's interesting is they have a pay matrix and then some of them actually have another longevity of. A small amount per year built on top of that, so it even gets more complicated.
Which would be why we have some making X. That's right out what recommended base pay would be, but then others.
Talking about outside of the county. I don't have any knowledge. If nobody in our, in our department makes any more than anyone else of the same job. So I don't know.
Have your base pay.
We have our base pay. Everybody makes exactly the same. That's, that's not changed. We don't even reduce for the first year, which is common.
Do you have a longevity program built in?
We do not. That's what, no. Uh, and that's something that we were considering presenting for the next year. But that's just something I want to make sure that the entire council is clear that that's not shown in these numbers.
Okay.
Yeah, and I don't know. I can't speak for any other departments. I know how public safety works, so I don't.
Okay.
I was just clarifying if they use the zero or a, a ten or a twenty or whatever.
Appreciate you. Thank you.
Try not to use obviously the probation.
The probation.
Yeah, but, but the base salary what, what departments, um, would consider the base. For, uh, you know, one to three-year officer or even five years sometimes. It depends how they have the scale like Amy said, so. But again.
Oh, yeah.
Excluding that longevity because the, they all have different matrices. They all have different, um. So that would be longevity could be an add-on to that base, just like other county departments.
Okay.
Anybody else?
Hi, Angela Morris, I'm Director of Court Services. My first question is, um. In the, first off, thank you for including probation in this. It never has been before. And so.
Wow.
Yeah. So I think I'm glad Michelle or whoever requested it be in there. So.
I don't know who did.
This was, this was good. My question though is, the last call, I don't know who to look at. The last column on the probation spreadsheets. It didn't appear that it was, we were compared to any extr- uh, those other counties. And so all there, all that is, is public information on the spreadsheet. So it's. The minimum salary which you get off the website and then it's our salaries, which did include all supplementals. So we met, when we talked with Lori, um, just for clarification, there is no outline pay that's not included.
In that twenty twenty-five number, it has everything supplemental.
Specialty.
Specialty, yes, stipend, the whole bit. That is your base salary on this sheet.
Correct.
Good.
Okay.
So I wanted Lori met with us, Steve and I, and so, um, she was so helpful, but I wanted that clarified for the council.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's.
That's a big help.
And then, so yeah, I wanted to know like those fourteen counties, we weren't compared. All, I mean, just, I'm just stating the facts. All that was on that, all that's on that spreadsheet was subtraction. So it was the minimum salary, ours, our, the schedule, our budget. Projected budget and then a subtraction. Um.
Yes, so, so probation officers are unique in the fact that their schedule, as you know, their pay goes with their years. So generally, and we weren't specifically asked to provide the, an external comparison for those. Um, but it's difficult because we would have to obtain hire dates.
Yeah.
From every county for their probation officers. So generally in our studies, we don't show that. Um, but, um. You know, if that's something that the council does want, we would just take a, a little more work and time to go and, but it's a lot.
Pretty much set the guidelines for what they want the pays to be.
They set, they set the minimum salary.
The minimum.
Yeah.
You said that a majority of the counties, oh, but she's shaking her head no and you said yes.
So I'm the president of the Probation Officer Association in Indiana.
So you're getting one more money?
From the camp. No, it's not a county position. Um. Fifty-eight counties pay above the minimum salary schedule. And so the second thing I wanted to ask you guys is if, do you want that data from?
It's a site, isn't it? Isn't there a website we can go on and pull that?
Um, I mean, if you go to the Popeye, the probation, uh, professional association of Indiana. Maybe, um. Ironically, each year some chief in the state will ask for our data. And they compile it to go to their council and use it as some kind of ammunition of like, hey, these counties all pay. Higher than the minimum. And so this last year, Monroe County compiled all that recent data. And so I have it in every county that talks about what their longevity pay is, how they pay over the minimum. Schedule, the, so there are fifty-eight counties.
There's some place the state ports that information officially.
Or we can get it from.
Other than somebody, somebody in some county.
Sure.
We don't know.
Yeah.
These numbers together.
You got, get that wherever you can. I'm just.
You have a link you can send us where you can get that and confirm that information. No?
Uh, that fifty-eight counties pay above?
No, just.
Oh, what information do you want?
Never mind.
It's okay. Thanks.
We'll figure it out.
Okay. Yeah.
You good?
Thank you.
Thanks, Angie.
Anybody else? Okay, Addie, do you have anything for us? If you do, talk to Legal.
No, but that's all, all we have. Lori, did you have anything? Um, we'll get the Excel spreadsheets to you tomorrow morning. Um, and then if there's anything else you, you need from us, let us know. If you have any questions, we're happy to.
Okay, I think, uh, I think just shot a few emails today and you guys have been answering them, so we appreciate that and, and we might have more.
Okay, that's fine. Well, thanks for having us tonight and, um, we, we enjoyed working on this project with everyone. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, um, with further discussion, Michelle, I believe you have some stuff.
So.
We need calls.
As you heard from Addie at, at Wiz, these numbers generally don't with the exclusion of probation. As just, um, explained by Angela Morris, these base salary numbers in the report. Do not reflect total pay and the council has to determine total pay. It has to happen. Um, so what we need from all directors and elected officials. Are any and all of your add-on pay categories and we need this information immediately. We need by position, special pay. Stipends. Bonuses. Supplements. Overtime used. How many? How many employees are using that overtime and what projects that overtime is for? We also need to identify any employees receiving compensation. From more than one line item. And we need to know what those line items are and that includes grants. Um, the president and vice president, we will both be here working in the West Annex this week. Please email us, text us, set up an appointment. This information must be received immediately. If we don't get this information, your budgets will revert back to twenty twenty-five. We have to know the total pay for our government employees. I cannot stress that enough. This request has been asked several years ago and there was no compliance. Well, that will not be an option this year. We gotta have it.
Yes, they probably do and we could go in and hand research what every employee in every department and every. No, we, we, we really need it from the department heads.
Yeah, the onus is upon the department heads and the elected officials to know and be able to identify the total pay. For each and every person they have on their staff.
It's not just for our education, it's for everyone's. I think everyone, every department, every elected official needs to know.
Want the overtime broken down by employee or just lumped for the overtime?
Employee if you can. I know it's short time. You've got it, you've got the most employees. Pardon?
Just here to date.
June thirtieth, yeah. Yeah, you can do June thirtieth.
Amy can write stuff. Just get that out, I don't.
Yeah, I, I was gonna continue with that. Amy will follow up with an email first thing tomorrow, correct? And get it out to everybody. Michelle and I will be in the building most of the day tomorrow and of course, anybody else that can and wants to join us. She secured a big area downstairs we can work in. Uh, we have direct email access to Addie. Uh, one of the things I wanted to continue to say, I know that it's frustrating. You're not walking away with any exact orders on what you need to do this evening. We ourselves do not know completely at this point. So here's my suggestion to the council. Is, uh, we take this information. And we all review it either to get, or well, we can't come together more than a couple people, but, um. And then I talked with Amy today on an absolute positively drop dead date. On submitting your final budget and that is, um, gonna be, I believe, July twenty-fifth. So if we leave here today and take the next few days. To do whatever it is that we have to do to come up with, what was the words she used that we used to come up with a pay philosophy? On the, all of the positions. And I would ask this council to be acceptable to call a special meeting on the twenty-first. To give you explicit, exact directions on your one hundred series. In order to be able to submit your budgets on the twenty-fifth. Now, knowing, I know that's a short time, but you should have all your twos, threes and fours done by now. So all you would be waiting on is your one hundreds. So that is the initial plan that we have. Or that we, I could come up with today that would. At least as a plan and make it, try to help everybody. Yes, but yes.
Do we, are we to a point where we can do the calculation of midpoint? I mean, we've got the cost analysis over here. Can we have a total number?
Uh, actually, we did that today on our own, but we're just not confident of what, that it is exact. They're sending an Excel spreadsheet in the morning so we can be a little more accurate on it and based on the internal midpoint.
Okay.
Based on the internal midpoint on the base salaries, we're, it, it, we're looking okay.
Good.
We're looking okay. Um. Uh, we've rolled around several options that we will talk to you guys about and a lot of it is what Addie spoke about today.
Well, from what I'm seeing, the external midpoint doesn't look too bad.
So. That's where we are. Does anybody out there have any specific questions for us? I'm trying to look at my notes to see if there's anything that I have for, oh. Uh. Additional line items. One thing I did want to speak to in a public meeting and. I checked with Legal today and we checked with several other counties and I guess it's a very popular. I checked with Legal today and we checked with several other counties and I guess it's a very popular and uh. A practice. Thing that there that that can help, especially moving forward with SB one. It would be my suggestion for twenty twenty six that we place a freeze on all new line items for employees. Until we realize what's coming down the pike, uh, for twenty twenty six, we freeze all new employee line items. So that is something that we can take a motion on this evening. If anyone, that that's my, that's. A suggestion in order to get a little bit of control and have a little more leeway on working with our numbers for next year.
Are you talking about new hiring?
Well, when you, I was corrected on that today. When you say new hire, hire, that means if employee A A quits today. You could hire a new hire for that line item that you have. But not to come back to council to say, I have five employees now, I need seven.
Right.
So we wouldn't do those two new line items, no, no new employee line items, but you can fill the ones that you currently have. Right, that's uh, yes, sir.
I'm so sorry. I swear I don't, I just want to talk. I don't think I do.
No, I thought we're not.
That, since you bring that up before a vote is made, we were going to approach. And ask about a unique situation that happened eight years ago. It's happening again, which is uh, when Sheriff Burgess is done with his term. There's going to be uh, at least six people retiring at the same time. So uh, the council at that time decided to make six temporary positions. For half a year to pay new deputies to get them trained. And then those line items went away after that.
And how many new ones did you get last year?
How many new?
How many new line items for for your department? Was it last year? Was it four or six?
No, we didn't get for new employees.
That was prosecutor.
Oh, was that the prosecutor? That wasn't you?
Yeah, we didn't get any.
You got four this year, though, I think, four new.
Uh, yes, we did get four new. This is, I'm talking about merit deputies. Correctional officers for transports.
Gotcha.
That the courts requested. I'm talking about merit deputies. This is just because of the retirement, which typically comes and goes. This is so we can train people simultaneously. This was done. Like I said, eight years ago under Sheriff Doug Cox, he hired at the time, I believe it was five. Uh, I'm looking at Amy because she usually remembers. I think it was five. They created five line items, hired five deputies for just for that half a year. Then when the five retired, they slid them into that line item and then the five went away. That was the same sort of thing we were gonna ask. So basically, it's gonna cost, it would cost the council half a year of. Six, six, I believe it is in this case, six additional merit deputies for half a year. To get them trained up so that they're ready to hit the road, because the problem is with the academy, the Indiana Law Enforcement Academy. Field training, but all the training that goes along with it, when you hire a new merit deputy, they are not working the road and protecting the streets. For about eight months. So to give this this six months buffer so that the shifts aren't short, because I think the last thing that anybody wants is fewer police officers on the street. So this was a, I just want to make sure that if that's something like that is is passed where there's a hiring freeze. For new employees that these are would be new employees, but only for six months and then they backfill.
But they would be coming into existing line item.
No, they would be new line items next year for six months. Then when the six people retire, they.
Thank you for the information, so therefore we won't take a vote on it this evening, but we.
I'd like to some, so I'm a liaison for the courts and I spoke with Judge Nugent today. Um, they're faced with some challenges. They've got an influx of mental health cases. And also some other things to uh, mention, but their caseload's going up. So I think that might affect the court system.
It just needs to be information that that, yeah, it's food for thought. There's seven of us up here, so there's seven of us that can look into it and and we can talk about it on the twenty first when we come back with walk-in orders. So hopefully you guys will start emailing as quickly as you can, your input, what you want to see done. If you want to take one of these uh, categories and run the numbers and and or any suggestions that you might have. You know, if you want to come in and work, work to, well, no, see, we have to be, how many can we have here? Working on this, three?
I mean. I really know. Yeah, I mean, but you can all work separately. It's it's not really about who's working on it. It's about discussions and, you know, we don't want it to turn to. Anything that would qualify as a meeting.
Okay, so probably shouldn't have anybody else. Okay, so be watching your emails closely, so we may need help.
And and everybody's liaising onto someone, so you need to be watching.
I'm assuming that everybody has uh, rec- has reached out to who they are liaison to and have their meetings set up and. And ready to go, so um.
What time is the meeting on twenty?
Oh, yeah, I I I'm gonna say the twenty first. That's a Monday at five o'clock. Is that all right? Uh, it's really never gonna be a convenient time for everybody. I understand that, but I don't know. I think you can probably zoom in, but I don't know.
Yeah.
Can you vote if you zoom in?
Yeah, well, let me double check, but this is not one of the situations.
Do you have to have a call? I mean, we'd have to have a call, wouldn't we?
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
I can be here.
Okay, well, Amy, if you, you guys will get it advertised for the twenty first at five.
Having the meeting to make recommendations. You're not voting on the actual budget.
I'm sorry?
You're just having the meeting to make recommendations. You're not voting on the actual budget, so it should be fine.
Okay.
So we don't need a motion to agree on the recommendations.
No, you can, you can do that, but what I'm saying is it's okay to uh, appear virtual.
Yeah, if she's just answering the question, you don't all have to physically be in here. Okay, that will help. So if you will do what needs to be done to get the meeting set, um. I don't know, some of you may be leaving more confused than you were when you came in, but. All on the twenty first, we'll we'll work together and try to get you some exact guidelines. If you have any questions or suggestions, we're open for that as well. So.
And I'm in the, I'm in the West Annex every day this week, so. Send me an email.
Anybody else have anything they want to say?
Most to adjourn.
Second, anybody? Okay, all in favor?
Hi.
Thank you, everybody.